Everybody. There we go. And if everybody be kind enough to mute while Mr. Chavez does a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. So. We are here for a public hearing, starting at 5:00. For item A, it is the 2020/2021 Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, LCAP. The Board of Trustees, the Willis Unified School, will hold a public hearing to receive input from the public on matters pertaining to adoption of the 2021 LCAP. The board welcomes public input. So. We are ready for anybody that wants to provide some public input. I know that the the plan has been published.
Let me frame some context that this is part of our funding as a district. This is not a grant. This isn't an add-on to. This is part of the state's funding plan this year. And the dollars we received were based off the number of students who qualify in that unduplicated category, which means low-income foster homeless in those areas of at-risk. And so that's how the number comes out. Remember that LCAP is less this year, but the continuity plan here is meant to kind of supplement that. The issue is, is the funding cycle for this is the vast majority of the funding has to be spent by December. And so it's really, it's an unusual funding that the state put together. And as usual, they put in a lot of parameters of meetings and approvals and what it can be spent for and what it can't. And so the current document is the plan that I put together for the board to review today. We'll approve this draft at a next meeting on the 28th. Then I send it to the county and they get their turn at it to either red pen it up or say it doesn't say this or needs that and send it back to me. And then they forward it on to the state. So this is an inclusive plan that had lots of people with input. We have a laundry list, as you could see, of ideas and potential funding. Just like most things, we have more ideas and ideas than we have funds for. But this is an inclusive plan. And so our goal is to accomplish almost everything on this list that we can. Use this funding first and then use other sources that we have. For example, teacher professional development. We can still do some of that after December. We would use title funds then. The grant, the ACIS grant is providing some EL services now. We still have the supplemental concentration LCAP funding. So there are other funding sources available. This just happens to be one that's new and earmarked and has some unusual timeframes. But we want to spend every dime they're giving us. So that's our goal, is to make sure we spend it on the things that we need. And as you can see, we have a laundry list.
Have we already received some of those funds?
Have received some of them, yes.
Yeah, just a portion. And part of what I put together was what we've spent to date. We've already spent some of the funds to date. Some of the things that were very obvious were also very pricey. Like K2, we need to be one-to-one with technology where we have not been in the past. We also need to upgrade teachers' laptops so they're able to actually provide this online instruction and be able to run the software and hardware that we need to make it decent. And so the teachers' laptops are in a series of disarray of five or six years. And some are, we have a few that are new, but most of them are four to five years old and not doing well. So those were big-ticket items that I put in already because there's a timeframe to get those. We're probably, even though we put in a few weeks ago, we're still four to five weeks away probably from iPads. And Chromebooks, we're hoping the set we ordered will get here sometime this week.
I'm assuming that the reason why there's a delay for some of these articles or these items, technology pieces, is because we're not the only ones that are out there trying to do this?
Oh, yeah. Your chances of running down to Best Buy and getting a Chromebook are zero.
We actually put some of the orders in during the prior fiscal year in anticipation of these back orders and are still waiting on some of those items.
Yeah, I was just thinking that in consideration of the times we're in, that maybe Apple and a few of these other vendors might be, you know, catering towards the school issue as opposed to the general public. But I don't know that one way or the other.
Well, the good news with Apple is their price on the iPads is, that's as low a price for an iPad as I've ever seen. So they're not jacking the price. Of course, when you have more money than the federal government, you probably don't need to.
Yeah, I know. So Mark, do you want to take us step-by-step down through the, through the plan? And when somebody from the public wants to chime in, do a chat message out there and we'll, we'll break you guys in whenever we can.
Yeah, I sometimes don't see the chat. So.
I'll be watching for them.
So the chat's disabled, so that won't be an option. So should we raise hands or?
Yeah, I turned it back.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you.
So the start of the plan is basically an overview of the district. And then it goes through looking at sites and individual groups. The plan is really designed to deal with distance learning, then onsite learning, and then some general things that you have to do just because of COVID. For example, nursing services, getting that information and testing and all those things have to happen regardless of what format we're in. And the plan is addressed to deal with at-risk students who are EL, fostered students. So the first part is broken into groups like that and services that people talked about that would be useful for them. Then it goes into a section about in-person learning. So the in-person learning is fairly short at this point because it's a, we don't know where that's going right now. But there are things we need to do in person. And when we go back, our assumption is, as we go back into onsite learning, we're going to probably be in AB groups, eight-day B days and some type of a hybrid, not a traditional everybody back at the same time. So there will be a lot of mechanics to work that out. Support for people with unique needs. There's some special ed concerns that are, tend to be growing, not shrinking. It's hard to provide what's called faith, fair, and appropriate education for special ed students when all we can be is online. That's why our special ed teachers, especially for our highest needs, have been doing one-on-one onsite stuff. And so. That's kind of paved the way for a little bit of what programs need to be in place. There's a section in here about parent engagement and nutrition. The nutrition part is, we have been serving basically nonstop since March 15. There are sections in here for foster and youth. And what I really wanted people to focus on is, near the end of it, is to look at how the services were broken out with onsite, distance learning, and things that were crossover that go between regardless of which format we're in. And as I said, more than the dollars spent are requested. And so that's going to be one of the things. It'll be a work in progress as we go. What does, what do things actually spend out to cost? And how do we fund those? It'll depend on timing as well. But there were lots of good ideas. I got input from everybody you can imagine. We got some great input that we normally don't get on foster children. I was really pleased about that. I know Kelly and I talked about that. There were some really good things we saw. But the list is pretty self-explanatory. So. I'd kind of leave it at that and look to questions. Oh, by the way, we had a committee meeting last night. I don't know, I think we spent probably an hour and a half or so and went through virtually every line item and talked about them. And so if we were looking for input, we got plenty. And we have so much that we have more than we have funds for, so. You know?
Okay. We have, Lisa Bowles has a couple of comments.
Thank you, Alex. So I just wanted to communicate, I reached out to my parents in my class and so did my colleagues requesting for input in case they couldn't attend the meeting. So I just wanted to communicate some of the things that were brought up were teaching devices, internet service. And then, of course, some people really want in-person instruction, even if it's a couple of days a week, as soon as we're able to go back. And then other things like headphones. Some students work in very loud environments that really can't, like, there's not many ways to help them other than giving them headphones because that sort of at least blocks out the residual noise in the home. And I think someone else expressed the need for microphones, which is basically, they just wanted better, better technology tools for receiving the instruction. And so I guess, and that was basically it, a lot of internet issues. I just noticed as a teacher, you know, you can really see who's got the internet access and who doesn't have internet access that's functional. And part of that is because of our landscape and where we live. But I would just like to emphasize the fact that it would be great to be able to provide some type of internet through the school district that could reach parents that were, you know, out in different places. And Mark's been great about the parents that I've communicated to him about going up and making sure that they have better functioning internet. And it's been really great. And I'm hoping for that kind of thing, for more parents in the district, like hotspots and things like that. Because to me, the bottom line is, we're a public institution. We are delivering a public education and we need to be providing the basic tools to do that, which include the correct internet service and devices. And that's kind of the very bottom line for me, you know? And then, of course, like Mark said, the needs go on from there, there's a lot. But that's sort of the bottom line, like basics, like can we meet with our families? Can we meet with our students and be able to deliver the education that we are here to deliver? So, and I think that's basically what I wanted to really emphasize.
So I want to know, the headphones, all of the, the microphones, I'm not sure how we would do that with students. But we need to talk about devices at home. The whole parents requesting that they pay for their internet service. And we can't pay for parents' internet services now.
Mark, you're hard to hear, I don't know why.
I am?
Yes.
Something changed.
We can't pay the parents' internet service at home. We can give them devices, for example, Ukiah's doing hotspots.
Could everybody, everybody mute your microphones, please, so that we can hopefully hear Mark?
So in regards to buying internet service, I talked to a parent who's unemployed and they have Comcast at their house. And how am I going to pay this $50 for internet access? The district can't just pay his internet bill for him. We can't take public funds and spend them at people's houses. We can provide a device for them. We can, Ukiah is taking their hotspots and they're basically the middleman for T-Mobile. They charge them 20 bucks a month for them, which is their cost for the internet access. So those are things we can do, but just providing internet access is not something we can do. The other issue with internet is, it really depends on where you're at. I've gone to places in Brook Trails where there's only three networks in Willits. There's US Cellular, there's AT&amp;T, Verizon. And T-Mobile runs off AT&amp;T's network. So the reality is, I have all three of those devices when I go to somebody's houses and I check them to see which one works best. But a lot of these folks, I've been to some way out places in this district where I'm surprised they even have anything out there, even power. But sometimes there's no answer. Even in Brook Trails, you have to use Verisak. But I worked, I was with T-Mobile all day on the phone. I'm trying to get additional devices. We reapplied for the grant to get devices. And, you know, all I can do is, they're just like Chromebooks. You can't just run out and buy a bunch of hotspots. They're not there, they're not available. So I've been using phones because there are a lot of phones available and you turn a phone into a hotspot. And so I keep telling folks, when somebody has internet access problems, call me and I'm dealing with them right away. I mean, I do it that day. I've been till dark, I've been going out to folks' houses. So it's important that we get them online, but I can't just pay for their service.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, I like the idea of the hotspots that you've been doing just because the difference between $100 for a family, around $100 compared to $20 a month is a really big difference. And so I appreciate all the work you've been doing in that area. And I just want to emphasize, I would love to make that a priority, continued priority.
Oh, it is.
Mark, is there anything to stop us from doing a similar program to what Ukiah's doing? In other words, us take control of the, of the billing and, and backcharge the parents at some point, even in the future?
Yeah, it depends on how long it goes on. But we put significant funding in here to deal with parents' home internet. I mean, there's significant funding. I have $50,000 in here to do that. But the real issue is devices. One of the things that would be really helpful, if you know people who have old iPhones they're not using or Samsung phones they're not using, that they could turn into a hotspot. If they're willing to give those to the school, I can put them on an account, but the school has to pay the bill. I can't pay somebody's bill for them. Our issue is really going to be devices and what device works. Because, like I said, it's, it's hit and miss no matter where you're at in Brook Trails. It's pretty easy when you're out in the East Valley where it's open. Most things work out in the valley. Comcast works in about maybe half of Brook Trails. And if you have Comcast, that's always the best solution. But I, I just need parents to call me. I'll get them a device. I, I'm on with T-Mobile and everybody wanted hotspots and I know we're not going to get them, but I can get cheap Samsung phones and just turn it into a hotspot. It does exactly the same thing. So I'm more than willing to do that, I just need to have the contacts.
Okay.
So what Lisa did, having parents contact me, she gave me a list of about eight people. I called every one of them that day and made contacts with them about how they can get on and what they need to do. So I, I'm putting that out there for the other ones. I've been doing ones from the high school in Bechtel as well, so. But internet's going to be a problem in our district. And I know, Alex, you were concerned about bandwidth. It's not the school's bandwidth that's the problem. You have to remember that even if every teacher in the district were doing Zooms out of their room, that's 100 people. On a normal day at the high school, there are 400 kids, 100 adults, and all the kids have a cellphone that's on the network too. So it isn't our bandwidth isn't the problem. The problem is, we're trying to Zoom between Willits Online, Comcast, and all these other phone providers. There's always a spark somewhere and it's like electricity. When it shuts off like that, your clock reads zero, then you cut off. So it's not the bandwidth, it's the connectivity that's really the issue. And Jen's been working on some things with teachers, how to reduce the bandwidth when they're doing certain things. But again, it's not going to be a perfect science. This is, this is not in the city where everybody's got a cable modem and you can really ramp up your bandwidth. So.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, if you've got $50,000 in that budget, we really should try and figure out if there's a way we can help out some of these, some of these financially scrapped parents that we still need to get their education to their kids.
Absolutely. And my solution's going to be, I can't pay your bill, but if I can get a bunch of old phones or even new phones that are cheap, they all do hotspotting.
Right. Is there, is there something stopping us from getting more of the hotspots from these various providers as opposed to, as opposed to phones?
You can't find them.
Same problem with the iPad, anything else, I got it, okay?
Yeah, T-Mobile isn't putting out more hotspots because they don't have any left. But again, the hardware's not really the problem. I can find hardware and turn them into hotspots. I basically take the phone and I make it a hotspot and I tell the parent, just plug it in, it's never going to go off. I have the timer set so it doesn't go off. You just plug it in and leave it and connect to it and you'll be fine. But, you know, it comes down to very simple stuff. It's, I got to have the address and we got to figure out which service works. Because T-Mobile's not the solution that's going to work everywhere.
Thank you, Mark, for all the effort you're doing on a daily basis to get internet service to the students and the families in the district. I really appreciate it.
Becky just suggested, Becky just suggested that we advertise through the newspaper that you're looking for these kinds of phones. Let's see.
Hey, can I just make one more comment? I don't know if, is there anything we can do as a school board or a county office of education to sort of, I don't know who we petition, but sort of like really make a cry to get people to, whoever the powers to be, to come get us better internet service? I know they went out to Covelo and did some work out there, I'm not sure exactly what. Maybe Paula knows because I know her daughter's out there, but. I don't know, is there anything we can do in terms of petitioning our state and state government?
Lisa, somebody's microphone's really bad, but I, you came through fine. No, you came through fine. Yes, I am on a committee with Senator McGuire and a bunch of other people about bringing high-speed internet up north. The problem is, it's a long process to run fiber optic cable from here to Crescent City and then to hit all the outline areas. Yeah, there's a bunch of people who want it, it's just the timing. In regards to Willits Online, I've worked with them several times. Willits Online is providing access to Covelo by putting three towers up inside the, when you go to Covelo and when you go over Dos Rios and you look down and you see the bowl, they're pointing three towers to their high school gym and center. And so the parents have a receiver at the house. So their proximity allows that kind of internet to happen. We don't have that geographical feature, we have just the opposite. And so that's why multiple providers are there. Willits Online can only provide internet access to people out in East Valley. And so there's another service also in town that has some. But we're stuck right now between about four to five vendors and picking out which one works the best. And at least in the short run, that's the best we're going to do. I'm hoping this is the impetus to run fiber optic cable out places like, all you have to do is run a fiber cable out Sherwood Road, all the way out Sherwood Road, and you could set towers out there. But again, it's a multimillion-dollar project that somebody's got to fund.
Yeah, no, great budget here. Okay, do we have anybody else that wants to make any comments?
I have another couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay, this has to do with the, it's page five. It is in the middle, I just, it has to do with English language learners. I didn't, what I need to know about is how you see a newcomer school? Not really a whole school, maybe a class. But it talks about providing a newcomers' class for students in grade six through 12. So I'm kind of wondering, is it two years and less in the country is going to be a newcomer? Or will it be a newcomer to our district? Or, you know, how do you kind of see that being set up?
Well, I'm going to give you my limited Spanish proficiency, I'm, I'm essa.
Okay.
And so.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that I've done is Maria's in charge of that. She and Mary are working on it together from the high school. And they're going to provide a class. And what they're using for data is, there are some obvious newcomers. We have five who are newcomers that we know of. We also have a group of students who are category one in their testing. And so we want to use, have them available too as well. But we try to keep the newcomers' class fairly small because they're going to be starting at a really basic level. But we're viewing that as a regular class they take daily.
Okay, for the whole trimester, right?
Oh, yeah, probably for the whole year.
Well, it'll take at least that. But at least just to start, you're figuring maybe a cap of six or 10, or what are you looking at?
Well, yeah, that's what we're going to try and cap it at. If we have to go to two classes, we would. But Marion and Maria are looking at the numbers to figure that out. Who's, where we're going to do it and who's going to do it and.
Can I just explain a little bit? So some of what we've thought about, Paula, is we have about five students who are, yes, first or second year in schooling and in US schooling. And mostly newcomer classes deal with, is, actually takes the place of their English core class or English and say, social studies. And then the rest of their day is in regular classes. And it serves sort of like a base for not just language development, not just learning English, but also for procedures and processes and things like that for their other classes. Because what we're finding right now is that, well, it's really difficult for a lot of children, but it's extremely difficult for our non-English speakers to be able to navigate how to even, you know, get or go on Zoom and, and get to their classes and et cetera, what, you know, what is expected of them. But that newcomers' class is really more of a survival, if you will, within the educational system. And then, of course, there's a section of that that is just their, their language development. And so like, they go to other classes, but in this one class, this, is this going to start with Zoom meetings also? Is that what, the only thing holding it up is personnel or a meeting to tell people here, you're in this class? Or a schedule?
Or a schedule or whatever you do to tell people where they belong at what time?
Yeah, I think that right now, probably personnel. Because what would be ideal is to have a bilingual teacher so that the communication can be there with parents. You don't have to have a Spanish-speaking teacher to teach a newcomer class because then you teach it like a foreign language, right? But you, it is actually much better, not because you need to translate for kids, but because you need to have that communication with the families.
And the growth is usually faster and kids are more comfortable.
The kids are more comfortable, absolutely.
One of the things you have to remember, that when we talk about buying devices and getting computers and having these classes, we haven't approved this plan yet. And we're, we're already talking about doing those things without.
Without this.
Yeah. Even though we know they're good ideas and we're gonna do them, we just have to make sure that we go through the process to make sure, you know, I don't wanna send us to the county and get it all carved up and say, well, you can't do this and you can't do that.
Yeah. Now, I'd just like to know what we're looking at. I mean, a newcomers' school, a newcomers' class, I know of at least three different definitions. And so, and those are just off the top of my head without thinking a lot. And I just, my personal biases exist. Some I believe work really well, some I think is a waste of time, energy, and especially money. And so I just kinda want to know the direction we're going in, is the big deal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maria and Marion are really your contact because that's just not my wheelhouse and I want them to.
Yeah, no.
Their business.
And as we, and as we look at, as we start to implement that Paula, we welcome your expertise on, on any type of, you know, any input you have, absolutely.
There, okay, I, I don't say, I lose things. I don't say I have a lot of expertise, but some of those paths I've been down, I wouldn't mind at least watching and maybe if you had spare time, just understanding it a little better, you know. But yeah, I see that we're sort of putting the cart before the horse. It's just no sense even putting the cart if we don't like the horse at all, or however that expression would work. And then there was, on, what page is it? Oh, okay, then if you scoot on over to page nine, there is a whole thing about how limited English speakers would be supported. And I, I learned a little today about the, you know, the, the family, school, reassigned positions. I just wanted to say that those sounded really good. And I, I just, I really think those would work out really, really well. And so that would be a real good thing in my mind. And then there was a last part about the English, English language classes and how they would be push-in or whatever they would be. And I just sort of would like to let you know, I'd like to reserve my thoughts and, and stuff like that until when we're closer. I just don't want you to think that I already agree or don't agree. And then the last deal had to do with, um, um, let's see. Oh, I had a question about the budgeting. And it says additional district tech, oh, that's on page 10 at the top. And it says higher additional district tech support for teachers and students comes to about $40,000. And I was wondering, are some of those people, I mean, are we still at two techs and a director, so to speak? Or was there a shift in employment or something that I sort of missed?
Well, we have two techs and a director. Does, well, she really, what she's doing is data entry, the CalPads data.
Yeah.
So half of Rochelle's day out of my office is instead of, we combine those two positions as a cost-saving measure, plus she has the skill to do it. So we have, when Cesar left, we did not get that position. So that is still.
Oh, okay, I thought it was eliminated with that deal we voted on.
Well, it is. It doesn't mean we can't bring somebody back in to help, but remember, we got a short window here.
Yeah.
To December.
Yeah, okay. There, there was a, I had a couple of questions about the, it says to, it's still on page, oh no, it's on page 12. And it talks about hiring and temporary reassigned staff to provide direct correspondence style instruction to students unable to participate. And it talks about materials, supplies, et cetera. And then the one under it, you skip a space and go under and create a position to be a foster student liaison. And so I figured that would be an aid, given the price. But I'm having a little trouble understanding where nearly $200,000 would be needed to reassign staff. I mean, you're not talking about paying their salary out of that? Or is that what that is and you put their salary back in the general fund? Because I sort of thought I knew what was going on with that position, but the amount of money surprises me.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to look at that, Paula, I'm, I'm looking at one that doesn't have the dollar figure in. What page was it?
Oh, okay. It's on page 12, it's sort of in the middle.
Okay.
But it's, it's not a big emergency, you know, I just am curious for maybe.
Paula, I'll give you a breakdown of what it is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, I don't have it off the top of my head. I had a spreadsheet, I was doing all that off, so.
Oh, okay, no, that's okay. And then, and then I just have one more thing, two really, and then I'll stop. And that is the deal on the school nutrition, which is on page 13.
Yep.
Okay, so it's talking about the USDA standards and the National School Lunch Program. And since 75% of our kids qualified and there were an extra 20 or whatever I read, then all kids are still receiving free lunches and breakfasts, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, and so they can go to the high school and pick that up. And if they make arrangements, they could be delivered to maybe, depending upon where they live. And then the, the, if they also make arrangements, they can maybe pick up their meals. I mean, I see where it says where the FY, the Wi-Fi access is there, that they could pick it up there. But it also, if they make arrangements with the cafeteria, can they pick up for more than one day at a time? Is that sim, I mean, we did that in the summer, does that still happen? Is it all the same?
Yeah, Christie generally works with the parent.
Yeah.
Know what the parents' issues are and how they sort that out. Just, does Suprema send somebody over every day from her preschool?
Yeah, oh, okay, it's, I just guess I'm checking that it's still the same as it was. Nothing has changed except now it's all back to the high school? It's not at Blosser anymore, right?
Right, it's all at the high school. And, yeah, the food service is a very interesting area that takes a, it's a whole different language of stuff.
Okay. Oh, okay, oh, and I see where I read it, it was 100 additional families. Well, that's good. Okay, so when they get, on, on the very end of page 15, it's not the end of page 15, but the back of it, it's saying that all this supplemental concentration grant funds. I think that that's where a lot of people are thinking there's some kind of grant going on. And so could you maybe?
Are you talking about the percentage and the dollar figure?
Yeah, sort of. What I'm really talking about is on page 15 and it's the second paragraph. I read the 20.4 percentage and that's how come there was extra money? Or what I thought was supposed to be extra money coming in? But that, if I'm not reading it wrong, is $2 million. And so that, I think, is where people think they're, that we're getting grant funds.
What you need to know about that, 20.4% is the amount of our budget we are required to spend on unduplicated students.
Oh, okay, that's what I missed.
2.5 million, okay.
Oh, okay.
That is a mathematical number that Nikki gets from the state calculator for funding. It sets the funding limit for us on how much money we're gonna get. But it all, that's the percentage of what our bud, what our budget has to be earmarked, at least 20.4% for those expenses for unduplicated students.
Just to clarify, so the, those supplemental concentration grant funds are continuing through the year? But because their focus for this plan for this year shifted to the learning continuity plan instead of that traditional LCAP, they still ask us to address some aspects of the supplemental concentration grant, but the primary focus of this plan is the learning continuity. We still are using supplemental concentration grant in the same ways as our prior LCAP said that we would. So we haven't made any drastic changes to.
Okay. I'm sorry, go.
Alex, you have a question from a parent. Byron, you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
There you are.
I had to turn my video off, but I am here. So I don't have the document, so I'm just gonna ask my questions. And if it's in the document, maybe you can get that to me.
Sure.
So in, is there something that is giving, I know the teachers are working really hard. Is there some support for them in terms of technology? Like, do, are they going to, are we going to hire more staff to help them with technology? Maybe somebody at each school that can help the teachers, you know, upload their lesson plans and documents and navigate all that?
It's on 16.
Yeah, it's on page 16, but yes, there is that. We also, we have to get the right hardware for the teachers first so they have the right equipment that's gonna let them do it, and that's in there. But we also have some technology for teachers, some training that's built into there. Most of the teachers are most concerned about getting curriculum training on how to use their curriculum in teaching and instructing online. And the technology part of it, you know, that's the thing I've told folks, probably one of the only other benefits of this entire scenario is our teachers grew five years in tech skills in five months. And so the reality is, yes, they're gonna continue to need help and every day something new comes out. But this is filled with software, like things like Duolingo and other products that they're gonna need to know how to use. So there's, there's not only expenses for tech support help, but some money in there also to make sure we can pay teachers extra duty time when they do that training. So, yeah, it's gonna be a tough, if everybody had great internet, it would make it really easy to do all.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, do, are you somehow getting information out to the rest of the parents about this whole internet thing and that you are trying your best with the phones? And they can, you know, is there, is it through the teachers that you're getting the word out? That you might have a phone device for people who don't? Because it, I mean, we're like three weeks in and it took me just till now to realize I should contact you. So I just want to make sure that other parents are getting.
It's one of those issues too of cart before the horse. You know, I'm trying to get people on, but I also don't have a plan approved that allows me to go out and spend it. But I'm trying to, I'm assuming that that's gonna be a part of the plan that nobody's really gonna disagree with. And so I'm trying to make that happen. My goal is, once we get past this initial meeting, is to start to go building by building and either connect with parents. That's part of the problem, it's hard to email somebody who doesn't have good internet access. They don't email back and they're not looking on websites. So that's something we have to figure out, is how to get to the people who don't have it. Because they don't access it.
Can we put something in the local papers that parents of children that have, that are struggling with internet access, they need, they need to actually contact the district so that we can work on their problems?
Yeah, I actually have an interview scheduled with the radio. Ironically, there are quite a few people who listen to the local radio station. I was, I was surprised the last time I was on it, how many people said, oh, I heard you on the radio. And so that might be a way to get it out there. Go ahead.
Can I just, can I just say that, well, I know that at Bechtel, we, those students who have not been coming on or who don't have the attendance or who we're not getting work from, we're actually calling every single family and trying to connect with them and asking them what, what is the, you know, why is it that your children aren't attending? And depending on what they tell us, we can ask them to do certain things. But when it gets down to, you know, we absolutely don't have internet and we can't get anywhere, then we, we turn it over to the superintendent for, for troubleshooting. So I'm, I'm sure that most sites are calling those students that are not attending.
They are, every site is doing that.
Yeah, it would seem that for those that we simply cannot solve the internet problem, then there's gotta be some form of independent study that can get implemented for those students. Am I correct?
Yes, in secondary, that's easy to do. We do have independent study, our independent study numbers have grown dramatically. We used to have five or six students at most in K8 and now we have over 30. And so those numbers have grown dramatically. The high school has figured out already who's participating and who isn't. And the ones who aren't are already on a Plan B, which includes packet and paper, pencil, those kind of things. But each one of the sites has been doing stuff. Maria opens up her library also and has students come in socially distant and all that stuff. And they access the internet that way. And while we're on the subject of internet, people ask me, how is the bus stuff going? We have arranged from four to five students pretty much at every site, other than one really remote site. We have a site out at Black Bart and Black Hawk. And we have a van there because there's four families there who need access. And so it happens to work at that spot.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment?
I, I just had one other question, and that is regarding to extra support like aides. And is there anything in this document to maybe have some more aide time? And it works even with Zoom because my kid, you know, connects with a small group and they correct their math lesson. So I know each class size can be, you know, on the larger side. And it's hard to be on Zoom with like 20 kids. It would be easier if there's maybe, you know, three or four kids. So I'm just wondering if there is any money for aides and extra classes.
And they kinda have to leave that to the principals to make that determination how, the aides are very different depending on what building you're in. Brookside and Blosser have much more aides than, I mean, Bechtel has very few aides and the high school literally only has one who's not a required special ed aide. And so it depends on the building. Generally speaking, you know, and I know you go out to, your kids go out to Sherwood. At Sherwood, we're kinda one-to-one. There's basically an aide with each teacher, but we're also teaching three grades at the same time. And so it, it's very dependent on the building. And I know that there's been some reassignment of people, especially special ed folks and some others, to try and help. But Maria, that's one you would have to answer, I can't really answer that for you. The high school reduces class size.
So I think that what you're talking about is making it a smaller group for instruction and, or maybe even for additional instruction. And the way that we take care of that at Bechtel, we don't have, we only have special education aides. We don't have regular classroom aides. But, but the way that we take care of that is that within our 100-minute block, the teacher has an instructional number of minutes that they do. And then they have a one-to-one time with, just right there, you know, they instruct the students and then they send them off to do asynchronous work. And they keep some of those students, two, three, and possibly others come, come in so that they can get some additional instruction and those are in smaller groups. They also have a time in their day. They also have a time in their day besides their, their two solid blocks that they have small group instruction and they ask students to come on in during that time so that they can deal with just three or four at a time, making sure that they understand what the instruction was. So that, that's all built into the teacher's day, not, so we don't really make use of, of aides for just to, you know, not just, but to make our, our class sizes smaller.
Just so you know, that Zoom provides a tool, basically breakout rooms. So if there was an instructor that had one or two aides available, they would be able to send, send an aide with a certain number of kids into a breakout room. And the instructor could flip from breakout room to breakout room, if you will, to keep things on track. So the, the tool is there. The question is, is, is there, are there enough aides available? Number one, and is there funding available?
It sounds like even our board members are growing in tech skills.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, it's a.
My, my granddaughter is in first grade and I know her teacher has the class divided up into groups according to reading and math, and she meets with a smaller group of kids for each subject area. So like she'll have like three different math groups, three different reading groups. And so she's working with smaller groups that way. And I'm sure that they're grouped according to ability. So anyway, it's been really impressive to, to observe how that's going down. So a lot of work going into it, so.
She's talking about you, Anne, because I know you're on, I can see your name.
So I do ten Zooms a day, five reading groups, three math, two morning meetings. It's intense, but it's worth it because you get to see the kids in a smaller group.
And you're super photogenic, so it makes it all good.
Yeah, right.
Well, this board member certainly appreciates all the effort that everybody's putting into this. I know that there are a lot of hurdles and roadblocks that are in everyone's way to make this successful for the kids. I know it's for the ones that have good internet access and those of us that have pretty good technology skills, it makes it a little bit easier. But let's, let's come back to the plan a little bit. And if everybody's had an opportunity to review the plan, if there are issues with the plan that you, 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 you want, if there's from, there are problems with the plan that you want to take issue with, please voice those concerns. If there are issues or if there are parts of the plan that, that did not get included, that you think should have been included, please voice your concerns. This is, this is a public hearing. This is your opportunity to go ahead and do that. I will want to counsel you that the, the, you know, we hire the superintendent to try and make, make the plan the best that we can make. And he has to make compromises wherever necessary, where, wherever he feels is necessary. But you do have an opportunity with the, with the, with the board's ear and superintendent's ear to make your case. So please make your case if you have one.
So I don't have a case, but I would like to just ask like a clarifying question about budget stuff. And I don't know Nikki, if you would be able to help me a little bit? Okay, it might be my computer, I don't know. I always feel like whenever I get on, it gets weird. But so yesterday we were given a sheet that said, had like the breakdowns of the funding that was given through the CARES Act for this specific school year. And then they, they said, uh, GEAR Fund was approximately eighty-six thousand dollars. CR Fund was one million, about one million, two hundred thousand dollars. And then GF, a hundred and thirty-six thousand approximately. Could you, with a total allocation of one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand approximately? So I guess my question was, so this is the money that came through the CARES Fund for, during this time for the pandemic, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So the three costs of money were generated in three different ways.
Okay.
They use students with disabilities as one methodology, LCFF and unduplicated fund. The vast majority of the funds are, must be spent by the end of December. I believe the GEAR funds, we do have longer. That's the smallest pot, however, so are still trying to be attentive to that December deadline.
Lisa, you need to unmute your mic. I muted you to see if it was your sound, your microphone. It is. When you turn on your microphone, it gets really scratchy. I'm going to have to get you.
I can turn down my volume. Does that help? Is that helpful?
Your microphone.
Is that any better?
It has a lot of feedback in it.
Okay.
We need to switch out your microphone.
Yeah, well.
Right, turning down your volume.
Yeah, I tried to turn down my volume. How is that? Is that any better?
It's better.
Better? Okay. All right, it's going to be kind of awkward because I'm going to have to try to hear your response. But so could you clarify what the GF stands for in that breakdown for me?
I don't remember that off the top of my head. Let me pull up one of my worksheets so I can refer to that.
Okay.
Isn't that the governor's fund?
I believe the GEAR Fund is the governor's fund. Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund is GEAR Fund, but I don't know what GF is.
What are the three names?
There's lots of acronyms always.
You just interested in where they come from or the amount?
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify some things in my head that I've been curious about.
You know, I'm not seeing, you know, the worksheet that I have may just be the same one that you are looking at. And it's sort of abbreviated in the headings. I don't know off the top of my, oh, here we go. Okay, so GEAR is government, Governor's Emergency Education Fund. A general fund. And. So coronavirus.
Yes, that's the one.
Okay, so GF is general fund. GEAR is Governor Emergency Education Relief and CR is Coronavirus Relief.
Okay, and so when they're talking about SIR funding, is that something separate that's not on there or how does that work?
Correct, that is separate. That is allocated to school districts based on the same methodology as Title One. And that is something separate from the learning continuity plan. So two different things. And it, those funds have a longer timeframe. They're not subject to that December deadline.
Okay, and those are, those are allocated this year for the pandemic, the SIR funds. Is that correct?
Yes, there's twenty twenty-one, starting twenty twenty-one. And I believe we have through twenty-one, twenty-two to use them.
Okay, and those are not listed on this. Is that correct?
Correct, separate.
Okay, and so do you, are you aware of what the amount is for that, that the school's being granted?
Not the exact amount. I want to say three hundred and sixty thousand approximately. And there is a small amount that we have to set aside because there are regulations with those federal funds that we have to provide what they call private school equitable services. So there is one private school that does access services under those funds, but that's a very small amount.
Okay, okay, thank you. This is so helpful. And so this amount, then the one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, that's all been given this year for the pandemic. But then in a regular LCAP year, we would do the regular budget, which is based on all the things like the unduplicated students and supplemental grants and supplemental concentration grants and all that, right?
So yes, and that's what, in response to Paula earlier, we had mentioned that, which is that LCAP, the supplemental concentration grant funds have continued. I mean, it is a lesser amount this year due to the way the calculation came out. However, it is still continuing. We just are not being asked to develop a new LCAP plan specific to those funds in this year. They asked to shift focus and do this learning continuity plan. And so because of that, we just are staying the course on what we had designated those funds in prior years. So in our district, I know there are many things, but things such as CTE, counseling services, some teacher and aid salaries, maintenance and facilities issues, you know, covers a huge gamut of things. We are staying on track with those things and continuing to use supplemental concentration in the same way we had previously identified. And then I, my understanding is that in a future fiscal year, the state will be asking us to start our new three-year LCAP plan. But for this year, we're just staying on track because we didn't have an opportunity to do a new LCAP.
Right, got it. Okay, so in other words, the school will be receiving less, obviously, because of what's going on. But, you know, I think it said, they're not going with the two point five or two point six COLA that they would in a normal year. But the school is receiving in addition to this one million, four hundred thousand, the regular, if you will, budget that they would during a regular school year. Is that correct?
Yes, so essentially what the state said was that, as you mentioned, originally when we budgeted for this year in terms of our, you know, mid-year last year and we were planning for this year, we anticipated a COLA. That obviously, there's no COLA. They are harmless on the bulk of our LCFF coming into this year. But the supplemental concentration grant will still be based on the collection of the unduplicated count data. So that's still dependent very much on the identification of those unduplicated pupils. And.
For this year, I, I thought that was based off of last year's data for this year. Is that incorrect?
Not the unduplicated count.
Okay.
The, the ADA, which drives the bulk of our LCF funding, yes, held harmless against last year. But the, the component specific to supplemental concentration is based on for this year.
Got it, okay. Wow, thank you for all that information. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Are we, are we going to need to document all of that with respect to our, our unduplicated? Do we need to actually go out and poll those parents for all that information again?
Yeah.
Well, only parts of it. So we do have, because the bulk of that is based on free and reduced and the identification of those students, we are now under that CE program for our food service. And that is on a four-year cycle. And you're allowed to develop a base year. And so you can roll forward students who were previously identified as free and reduced and who remain enrolled. Where it becomes an issue is if you've had enrollment changes or if a family has status change where they previous, were not within the threshold for being identified. And if that had changed, of course, we'd love an opportunity to, to identify those students now.
Yeah, they're called direct.
Roll forward a big chunk of it.
Well, I would argue that there probably has been some significant status changes amongst our, amongst our population.
Yes, and part of it, so the other thing that happens is that we are able to do what they call a direct match. And, and it is a process where families who have met those economic thresholds via other programs such as CalFresh, the state links that to our enrollment data. And we're able to do a direct match and qualify some of those students if they are enrolling in other programs. So that stuff, that's all, you know, happening on a continuous basis, month to month in our student data department.
So one of the things I want to make sure folks are aware of, when we're talking about all these budget things, we, those were all in our budget. All those columns that we were talking about in funds, those were in our current budget. We also know that in, starting in January, what we don't know is how bad are we going to get hit with deferments? The other issue that you have to remember is our cost of doing business went up again this year. When you do step in column and you do that with both WTA, CSJA admins and all that stuff.
As well as STIRS and PERS increases.
Yeah, that was at least a three hundred thousand dollar bill. So our cost of doing business went up along with that.
The other thing that we've talked about several times and we will continue to be visiting throughout this year is the issue of cash flow. I am continuing to work with the county on trying to refine that projection process. The tools that we've used in the past have been sufficient when we've been in an environment where our cash flow was very stable. And now with these massive deferrals, we, there's a very real possibility that we will have to look at borrowing options or doing, you know, tax revenue anticipation notes or something like that. So we're, we're having to really monitor that.
So as, as glad as I am that the state gave us some of this funding upfront, I'm super disappointed it doesn't go through the school year because then it would be way easier to budget and manage and really provide program throughout the year. But with that not being the case, I know why. I asked the question and McGuire told me they're not doing it because they don't want to be giving us Corona money and at the same time taking away money they're normally obligated to give us. So they had a rationale for it, but the deferment.
I would argue that if they just gave us the money upfront and told us we had to spend it during this particular budget year, fine. Then, I mean, give it to us now and quit haggling over it and just tell us we have to spend it during the budget year. Then they can defer whatever they're going to do, like in, in, starting January. But we got a lot of geniuses in our government, that's all I can say.
It puts us in a really tough position in terms of staffing because our, if we bring positions on, you know, with some exceptions, they tend to be for full school years. So when we're receiving funding that only helps us offset a position for half of a year, it falls on the districts to identify how we will pay for it for the remainder of the year.
Nikki, I sent an email to the superintendent with basically some other drive funding options that you guys probably already know about. But it was something who sent to my inbox and so I forwarded it on.
Okay.
Yeah, Alex, you're making the assumption that they believe local control works.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm bad that way. Did Maria get a chance to get a question in?
Oh, was that me?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, my, my questions were answered. Thank you.
Very good. Any other further questions?
I just saw that there was a question here from Amy that I thought I would respond, asking about if the budget was posted online. I thought that it was. If it's not, I will be sure to work with Trina and we'll get that posted.
That would be very good.
Yeah, it's not posted. I can't find it. And I don't know, is there any way to, to post the previous budgets or is it?
or is it only just the current budget? It'd be great to be able to see over time what has changed.
Typically, we just keep like the current ones posted online. But certainly I can email other stuff if there's other things you're interested in. Sort of right now, I would say, the ones that are most relevant would be being able to track what we had anticipated it might look like beginning at second interim before this all hit last year compared to what we did at the adoption, which incorporated the governor's proposals, which as we know, were sort of dramatically different than what the Senate then approved. And then finally, that August revision. So right now, the forty-five-day budget that was done in August is the current approved budget. So that would be posted online will be the one that we did in August.
Okay, yeah, with the measure coming up, I think people are interested in seeing where the funds go and how much we've saved, like on solar panels and stuff like that, a breakdown of funds. I think it's, you know, it's important to be able to see. That's all. But I can email you or meet up with you. That's fine.
I believe the unaudited actuals are out there, aren't they, Nikki?
Well, the unaudited actuals will be at the September twenty-eighth board meeting. And so that will be the final outcome for last year's budget.
We leave the audits out there, correct?
They should be.
Yeah, audit should be out on the website.
Well, the current one is not posted yet because it's still finished.
Or last year's. I don't see any type of budget on the website or posted publicly. I don't know where to find that, if it's through MCOE, if it's through our website.
No, it should be our website. And if it's not there, I'm gonna have to just work with somebody in my office to see about getting it up there. I thought that those got posted when we had our meetings. They would, I mean, it would take more digging if you're trying to get to them like right now. But they're in the board packets. So the board packets are always posted on the website. But there should still be direct links to those, so we'll work on getting that cleaned up.
Thank you.
Alex, Myra has a question.
Go ahead.
Mariah, are you there?
Oh, yeah. No, my question was answered. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought too. So does anybody else have any questions or comments with respect to the... This Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan? So again, if something comes to mind that you're concerned about on the plan, please email the superintendent. And hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to get that stuff in. Again, I know that it's gonna get submitted to... We'll vote on the plan on the twenty-eighth. It'll get submitted to the county. The county will have an opportunity to weigh in on our plan. And hopefully, they'll approve it as well, and then we'll be moving forward. So again, the plan is kind of work in progress, just like the superintendent said. I'm sure that there'll be opportunity for it to change. Hopefully, not a great deal, but at least where necessary as we move forward. If no one has anything further, I'd like to bring this to a close. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And is there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
I only have one comment, Alex, is that I hope that this isn't a one-time with teacher involvement in this because, to be honest with you, as I've said before, the LCAP is exactly the same thing as this. And it's more funds, and it has three-year program stuff in it. So I would encourage... A lot of good stakeholders are involved, and I'm hoping that continues.
Any other public comments, friends, not on the agenda? And everybody needs to mute their mic unless they're gonna speak. Not hearing any. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn for a second.
Okay, I see Jeannie and Robert.
I'll second him.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, and all in favor to adjourn? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, board members.
Everybody, good night.